I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for June 18th. Could we please have roll call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Van Der Heidt.
Present.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Hellming.
Present.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Here.
City Attorney Renee Kebrik.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Knies, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a quorum for this meeting.
If you would, please take a moment for personal reflection. Thank you, and would all that are able please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes were sent out. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as they were presented.
I have a motion from Nancy.
A second.
And a second from Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tonight, we have department presentation from Community Development Planning, Josh Gunsmann.
Is the mic on?
It is now. So first of all, I want to thank everyone for having me today for the 2024 review of the Community Development and Planning Department. Before I start, I want to recognize, you know, as the Community Development and Planning Director, I want to recognize that tomorrow would be Juneteenth. We are off for that federal holiday, and this is the month of June, which is Pride Month. So just want to reiterate that the city of Jasper is an open community for everyone, and we want to be a melting pot community, so I take that very seriously and as part of my job. Additionally, before I start, this is the first time you've been able to meet him, but in attendance in the back row, my intern for the summer is Wyatt Koenig. Wyatt's a senior at Ball State. He comes with a multitude of experience in the planning field, having done internship with the city of Muncie, as well as the county's Economic Development Council. So hopefully he can teach me a thing or two while he's here. With that said, I want to go ahead and roll into our presentation. You know, as part of our department, we oversee four boards. That'd be the Jasper Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, the Redevelopment Commission, as well as the Economic Development Commission. All of those meet on a monthly basis, with the exception of the EDC meets on a quarterly basis when there's business at hand. Next item, we, you know, a large portion of the meeting time and/or staff time is related to zoning petitions. The Board of Zoning Appeals in 2024 heard 68 petitions, kind of on par for where we have been in the previous two years. A little bit down, but I think that correlates kind of to what we'll see in a little bit later, where overall activity was a little bit down. 2024 in general for housing and/or building was kind of a soft year. And then Nancy, last year you asked that I present the highest BZA requests, and so these would be the top four that we've had, 11 related to setbacks, 10 for signs, 7 to material compatibility. That one, if you're unaware, we have a regulation that requires if you build a garage or a secondary building on your home that's greater than 300 square feet, it has to match in some way the same materials. So when we say material compatibility, that's what we're talking about. May look at that one in particular moving forward at some point, because the board in general has kind of moved to allowing it on a pretty regular basis to not necessarily match the exterior materials of their home. And then in addition to that, that'd be height, and that's right, that's related to accessory uses. That used to be the number one thing that we would see. We amended it a few years ago to 22 feet for an accessory building, and now we've seen a great reduction in the number of those. Paul?
Came up 4 feet. We were at 18, I think.
Yeah, that's correct.
Went to 22.
We were 6.
To get rid of a bunch of them, and now we're back to seeing them again. We need 24 or 26 feet to match pitch lines and roofs.
Well, and again, we're only seeing six here, where it was multiple per month that we were seeing. And to Paul's point, people have bigger toys, people are, you know, that's the new standard.
Vertical capacity.
That's right. The Planning Commission, so obviously that's, we've had a little bit going on with there. Probably the two biggest items, or the biggest item that we had was the North Ridge. So that involved a replat, that involved a major plat, that involved a rezoning, that involved some variances. We had two rezones and 12 replats, of which two were major plats and came before the Planning Commission. Five were minor plats handled by the plat committee, and then five administrative plats, which are handled by me solely. Any questions on any of that? Construction permit totals, we have 308 total permits, and that includes both improvement location permits, which are building permits, as well as the other permits that we handle through our office, which is defense, pool, sign, demolition, and mobile food. As you can kind of see, the overall permits were, the total permits were about the same, 308 total in 2024 compared to 326 in 2023. As far as the improvement locations go, were provided with an estimated build cost for those units every time they file a permit. So that equates about $35,690,000 in investment in 2024. Again, right on par with 22 and 23 from a dollar standpoint. However, as I mentioned, 2024 was kind of a soft year. We saw only 55 new residential units created. When I say residential unit, that's either a single-family home, or an apartment, or duplex, any place where a unit where someone could live. We had 16 single-family residential homes. That was about half of what we traditionally had. We had 39 units created. On the bottom left, you can see a picture of Park Place. Park Place up on what used to be the former 30th Street Park. They've entered into Phase 3 and Phase 4, which will complete that project up there. Added, or within this year, we'll add some more units as well, and then a single-family home there. North Ridge is pushing dirt. They have done a lot of infrastructure work and dirt work, and I believe they'll be starting on some of their homes here in the next couple of weeks. In total, like I said, 55 units were created. If you remember, and I did mention it in our prioritization meeting yesterday, the 2023 housing study done by DuBois Strong indicates that we need about 110 units per year, or a cumulative total of about 1,300 units by 2035, just to maintain the current rate of growth that we've had traditionally for the last almost decade or more. So at 55, we've come under the gun, but 25 is shaping out to be a much stronger year, so we look forward to that. Any questions on that? One of the new additions last year, as many, or if I believe you all know, is we took a part-time role in our permitting specialist to a full-time role. In addition to that, in '23, I believe, the legal department had implemented a GoGov, which is a software that helps us manage and track ticketing. Code enforcement leaned into that and was using that. Kenny and, again, the legal department were using that right away. In '23, they had approximately 126 tickets that they opened. In '24, they did about 136. And I use those numbers to compare kind of what we've done with the new full-time permitting specialist, whereas in '23, there was about 12 individual tickets opened in our department. And then in '24, we had about 104, of which 90 of those were either initiated or finished by the new full-time permitting specialist. So again, there's a lot of capacity that was added there and allows us to, and I use the word enforce lightly, to basically, you know, keep the standards that we've, as a community, have put together and enforce those on a little bit easier, or excuse me, in a little bit more thorough way, which is, you know, the downstream effect has freed my time up to do other items for economic development and building and planning. So Adam's done a great job of that. Another item that I spend a lot of time with and work hand-in-hand with is the Heart of Jasper. Of course, you all know the Heart of Jasper, and I know it's steel or thunder, but some of the main things that they had completed over the last 12 to 14 months, the beginning of this year, they received the National Main Street Accreditation. In '24, they had seven businesses opened in the district and five relocate to the downtown area. They had $98,000 in private investment, as well as through our facade program that we help with, 14 new signs and facade improvements total. Through the grant, through the donations of a generous donor, they had two businesses receive new business incentives totaling $23,000. Earlier in the year, they merged with Rojack. They added two member, board members, and those were previous Rojack members who have joined their board, and as well as added five committee members. And then a future project that they're currently working on, that they hope to come to the city here in the next couple of weeks and ask for permission on, is lighting up the downtown Jasper. As you may recall, at one point, there was lights across all the buildings on the downtown. They'd like to replicate that with new LED lights, et cetera, that they've got a grant from the, or funding from Rojack, as well as donors and their own budget to sponsor. But they'll come to the Board of Public Works here in the next couple of weeks and talk about that a little bit more. And of course, you know, the, we are slowly getting to the end of our Phase 2 of the downtown construction. The current projection is that that'll be done and completed by Strassenfest. So, you know, barring anything major happening, we look forward to that being completed and having a little bit of normalcy return to the downtown area. The Jasper Social District, not too much hap, I say that, in 2024, we opened our downtown social district, and that was a major thing for us. I started to say not much happened in way of any changes or anything new. By all, you know, indications, the retail permitties that we have down there have indicated it's a success in that it has been utilized, it has been, so far, no discernible problems have been identified, and they've all indicated that it will be more successful as they continue to lean into it and promote it more than they currently have. You may remember a few weeks ago, we did expand the district. We included three more blocks north to include snaps, to allow snaps and rice and spice to be added into those designated permitties we've since supplied to the ATC, and they've acknowledged that they've received those. So here in the coming weeks, those individual establishments will be able to participate in the DORA. 2025, again, you know, through June 1st of this year, already got 80 improvement location permits, building permits, as well as numerous other fence, pool, sign, demolitions, and vendor signs. So by and large, coming along a lot stronger than 2024 did. And then lastly, the newest and probably the biggest project that we'll see over the next 12 months is through your approval of funding and through the Board of Public Works' approval, we have engaged WGI as the main vendor of our comprehensive plan process, as well as JSNA, who is an Economic Development Coordinator, and Future IQ, who handles public engagement. Between those three, we'll engage over the next 12 to 14 months in community engagement and really trying to find out where the community wants and what their vision is for the next five to 10 years for the city of Jasper. So more to come on that, but as of today, we've, we just received back the contract from them, and we look to execute the contract and begin that process here in the next couple of days. So that would complete my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Josh?
Very thorough, Josh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would imagine your intern did a good job putting this together.
He did a great job.
Just wanted to acknowledge that. All right, next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-10. This is available for its first reading. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
Move to read by title only.
I have a motion from Kevin to read by title only.
Second.
And a second from Paul. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance 2025-10 by title only?
Ordinance number 2025-10, an ordinance providing for a uniform code for traffic upon the public streets of the city of Jasper, Indiana. Stop intersections designated.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Vince.
I'll second.
A second one down there from Phil. All in, well, let's open it up for discussion at this point and description.
Sure, I can go through it. So there's been kind of a long while of discussion about the intersection of Fourth and Mill Street. We're trying to encourage people to use Fourth Street as the pedestrian pathway between the cultural center and getting to other parts of the city, particularly in trying to get from the cultural center over to the river center. We're trying to get people to take Fourth Street over to Jackson, and then Jackson down to the stoplight and cross at the stoplight. That's really the only safe location for people, pedestrians, to cross. And also then, for those not going south to the park, or the river center, but coming to the downtown area using Fourth Street. So it's been pointed out that it's difficult to see in that area for people crossing, and we had a number of different strategies that had been suggested, changing the location of parking, putting some kind of a, for lack of a better term, speed bump or something, some other traffic calming device. And at the end of the day, the traffic committee determined that if in fact we are trying to make that a pedestrian route, that it would be most appropriate to just go ahead and put a stop sign in. So they recommended to the Board of Public Works, and the Board of Public Works passed a resolution that recommended a stop intersection at Fourth and Mill. So that's part of, and then our downtown revitalization plan from the beginning included creating four-way stops at Main, one at Main and Fifth, and one at Main and Seventh. So this also adds a four-way stop at each of those two intersections. And then, of course, the next section deletes the old language from the ordinance.
So basically, the downtown plan was a stop sign one block off of the Cordana Square in each direction, that there would be a stop sign for traffic calming? And, you know, I think as we were working on the project itself, kind of forgot about that portion of the project being out there. And, but it was the original intent, and as the construction completed and did their striping and painting, they actually painted the stops out there, made us.
I think Kirsten brought that up. There's a stop, whatever they're called, stop bar there, but there's no stop sign there.
Yeah.
On Fifth currently.
On Fifth.
On Main, Fifth, yeah.
So on Mill, you're going to stop by the cultural center and Fourth, and again on Sixth.
Would you pull your mic in, Phil? Phil, would you pull your mic towards you? Thank you.
I'm turning it on, too.
And turn it on.
So you're going to stop there on, by the cultural center, that's Fourth.
Correct.
Then again, on Sixth by the police station, and then again on, would that be Eighth or Ninth?
Ninth.
Okay.
I guess I should point out that there are several other changes that are going to be made that don't require ordinance changes. So if you recall, Mill Street between Third, as you come off Third Avenue and go straight, and it's a two-lane northbound street. So we are going to change that between Third and Sixth to a one lane, and then add several parking spaces. I think we, I think maybe six, six we were hoping. Easily six, maybe a few more. Yeah. On the east side. Correct, on the east side of Mill Street. So added parking spaces, one lane northbound between Third and Sixth, then it would be two-lane again between Sixth and Ninth, and the stop sign. Those are the changes for Mill Street.
The only thing I was concerned about on Mill Street is that, I know watching traffic as they round the corner there by the cultural center, they seem to build up a fair amount of speed, and I'm a little concerned. I mean, is there any way to, you know, when you put a new stop sign there, people are going to, you know, by force of habit.
We will.
If we can do like a flashing light or something to get awareness out, so people will stop, and then eventually it can go away, but I'm just concerned about, you know, some family walking across there and thinking that they have a stop sign.
Correct, they, the Safety Committee did talk about that, and I think if you recall, we did the same thing when we put the stop at, was it Ninth? Ninth and Main. Yeah. So yes, that will definitely be taken into consideration.
And we did, stood it out.
Still blew through.
Porterville Road, too, is, we were heading out with the new stop sign out there by the school.
Yeah.
I've mentioned it before, but I sure do like the road signs, the indicator signs with the solar-powered LEDs around the edges of them, and a couple like Kendall have, that's going to be truly a high-traffic area there. Might be in our benefit to spend a little, a couple bucks and put one of the road signs in with the LED flashing around it.
That was brought up in our NDOT collaboration meeting yesterday about the different signs. They do now the speed signs, they put them in cities, and they've also are recommending those flashing to draw attention to.
Especially on new ones.
Right. Yes. Once you get used to it, it's just, you know, to your point, force of habit, if you live out in Holy Family, and you're going to come around the corner and you've been doing it for 15 years, you're not going to think it's there, and I'm just, you know, always fearful of that, so especially when it's new, so.
I made a note of it.
The committee preferred the stop sign over, like the, what the proper terminology would be, but for the yield for pedestrians, like you see at French Lake, the main drag they have there is at probably 56, so.
Like, just a crossing?
Yeah. I mean, that was just.
They discussed multiple different options, and at the end, at the end of the day, they determined that a lot of weight is being put on the fact that we are pointing pedestrians to this intersection, and it was just felt like a stop sign was the safest route under I think we just have to be cautious on, at the Fifth Street intersection, that we don't put the parking too close to the intersection to cause the same problem to happen there for pedestrians crossing over, that you can't see the cars coming. Yeah, I mean, truthfully, everyone in the group agreed, these kinds of intersections where the cars are parked almost up to the intersection are all over the downtown area. Yeah, they are. I mean, every street that has parking allowed on it, just about, the cars park very close to the intersection. So the hope, though, is, again, because we are directing pedestrians, trying to create a pedestrian route, that this is the safest, safest option.
And I, you know, that's, what type of stop sign, the lit ones, you know, we never had a discussion with the street department.
Yeah, I did, I put a note here.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, I have a motion from Vince and a second from Phil. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we'll bring that back to the next council meeting, or is it one reading? Nope. It's the first reading. Correct.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-11. This is a first reading procedure as well. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
Like a motion read by title only, please?
A motion from Paul, read by title only.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2025-11 by title only?
Ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance of the Common Council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, approving and authorizing a loan between the Gas Department and the Water Department within Jasper Municipal Utilities and other matters connected therewith.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading?
I still move.
I have a motion from Chad.
A second.
And a second from Kevin. Discussion on this.
So there are, I'll call them three water main, water main projects. One is on Dorbit Street from 13th, let's see, I have it here, 13th Street to, God, why can't I think of that? It's 13th Street from Dorbit to Emily, right, or Bartley to Emily, then 13th Street from Emily to Altmeier was the alternate, and Dorbit Street from 13th down to? To Ninth, Ninth it says in the article. Thank you. Could not come up with that. So those, those projects are, were just bid, and there was enough in the budget to cover all three, that, both of the base projects and the alternate. And so the bid documents are under review right now from the Engineering Department, so it's not been let yet, but we did go through the bidding process. And then the loan would also cover the Skyline, if you recall, that project would also cover the costs associated with that project.
When we loan money from one department, one thing I did don't really understand, you've got to help me with, we charge 2% interest? Why? Why do we do that when you're talking about it's money coming in from one utility service to another utility service?
That money would otherwise be invested, it would be earning interest, so I think that that's.
But you can also say that, you can also say that maybe our electric rates are too high. If we, if we have a surplus in there, I just, I don't get the 2%.
You're saying to charge 0%.
It's from gas to water.
I say charge 0%.
It actually, until just, wow, I don't know, a couple of years ago, it was, it was higher than that.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
We have to know why we're doing it.
I think, I believe that it's, each of the utilities is treated as a separate business entity. And so for that reason, they have to justify being able to loan those dollars and not losing that revenue in the Gas Department versus the Water Department.
It doesn't make sense, I'm sorry.
I, well, it's coming back.
We can raise the water rates and pay for it, and we don't have to borrow, but then that increases everybody's water rates. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, and the water rates are going to have to cover it. They are going to have to probably be.
To pay the loan.
To pay the loan off.
Right.
So rather than bond on the outside, for the project.
I think it's a very good business decision to loan from one utility service to another. I think that's absolutely the right thing to do, rather than go on the outside and pay higher rates. I just, I don't really understand the 2%, because I, it's money from one tax, it's still taxed, it's money from our citizens paying for utility that we end up with more money in, and we're lending it over here, and then we're charging more money to come back over here to pay it off.
Well, I guess you could consider that all gas rate payers are not the same as the water rate payers. So. So, at this point, the Water Department is borrowing from the Gas Department, and, you know, I guess the thought process and maybe the legal requirement is that those gas rate payers should be allowed to, that utility should be allowed to earn interest, just like it would if it were not loaning those funds to the Water Department.
Oh, because those funds would be invested within that department.
Right, correct.
Paying some interest.
Correct.
That kind of helps make that, make a little bit more sense.
But you're still charging.
Yeah.
They're still paying everyone.
Yeah, there's probably less gas customers than there are water, so. I remember when we had the conversation when we were charging more, so getting it down to 2%, we thought that was...
We were like 4% to 5% before we went out, and then we made it, and then we could not...
We put a cap on it. It was going up based on the market rates, and it was getting pretty steep. I mean, pretty, it was having a big impact, so.
And does it say in here, just kind of looking through here a little bit closer, that the loan could be paid off sooner than five years?
It could be.
It could be.
Yes, it could be, but it has to be paid off, must be paid off in five years, or...
There's no penalty to pay early. No penalty to pay early, like it could be if it was borrowed from a bank or somewhere.
They'll pay it back based on increased rates.
Other questions, comments? I have a motion from Chad and a second from Kevin. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we bring this back in July also, correct?
Next is a resolution. This is a one-reading-only procedure as well, 2025-4. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
Make the motion be read by title only.
I have a motion from Paul, read by title only.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Attorney, please read Resolution 2025-4 by title only.
Resolution number 2025-4. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, approving sale of real property.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2025-4?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
And a second from Phil. Further discussion?
Okay.
On these properties, when they're sold, even though they're programmed and maintained by the Park Department, when that money is generated, does that go in the general operating funds, or does that go to the Park Department?
I believe it'll go to the Park General.
Park General, okay.
I think the rule is that it has to go back to whoever paid for it, so I'm assuming that the Park Department paid for it.
Well, I don't think anybody paid for it. It was a donated property, but the Parks Department...
Donated to the parks, yeah. I think that's, that's the impression that the Park Board has as well.
Well, they have been maintaining it for all these years, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions specifically. I will just, I'm not going to go through the whole history of it because I'm sure you're familiar with it, but since the last time that we tried to sell the largest of the parcels, the neighboring Idlewild Lake came to the city and identified, actually, the surveyor identified maybe eight or 10 items of Idlewild property leaseholders that were encroaching on our property. There are things like outhouses and fire pits, and somebody has a building corner built across the property line. So, I asked the surveyor to carve out a, I call it a sliver of that lot, Lot Number Three of Camp Karn's subdivision, the smallest that he could make it in order to catch all of the encroachments, and asked if Idlewild would then be willing to pay the appraisal value of that property. I said it was either that, or we can leave the property as is, and they can get all the encroachments off the property. So, they chose the first option to purchase that property. So, we carved out .696 acres, just a little triangle off the side, the west side of Lot Three of Camp Karn's. So that, and we did go through a, the mayor identified the Park Board as the body to have a public hearing concerning the sale of these parcels. No one came to speak or remonstrate against the sale, so the Park Board recommended at its last meeting that we proceed with the sale of Lot Number Three, which is the largest. It was, it's approximately 27 acres. This, this sliver of Lot Number Three that I just described, and then Lot Number One, which is the lot that holds the small house on the east side of the property, or the east side of the subdivision. So, if you recall, the last time we tried to sell Camp Karn's properties, we did try to sell the largest of the lots, but the appraisal, we added a value that we thought was appropriate for the timber that was on the property. Instead of using the average of the two appraisals, we used an increased value. So, since it did not sell, now we are asking for the average of the two appraisals, which I think I sent you. It's been a little while since I've sent that information. But we will advertise in the Herald Lot Number One with the home on it, and Lot Number Three, which is the lot with no improvements, 27, again, it's approximately 27 acres. And then, we will sell directly to Idlewild, the, as the abutting property owner, that small portion, .696 acres. Any questions?
What happened to the one across the road, across the road on Jasper? That did sell, okay.
Yeah, that sold the last time we went through this process.
We have those dollar amounts, the appra, the asking price on those, again, I, I don't, I didn't write them down, I don't have them with me today.
I may be, I may have them in here.
Did reduce to about?
10, 12,000 because of this new septic system.
So, let's see, I have the last, Lot Three is 125,400, and Lot One is 98,200.
That's the lot of the house, right?
Yes.
And do you know roughly how many acres that that is?
About two.
Two acres with a house under $100,000?
Well, it's got no septic. And that's the reason that it didn't get advertised the last go-around. While we had the two appraisals done on that property, those appraisals did not consider the condition of the septic, and when we determined that that was inoperable, then we hired somebody to come out and look at the soils and do that whole analysis, and then give us an estimate on the cost that it would take to install a septic on that lot. And so, I forwarded that information to the appraisers, and they adjusted their appraisals accordingly. So, this new number is the average of the two adjusted appraisals.
And it was septic approved?
Yes.
This lot is certified for?
So, it can be repaired?
Can be.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Phil. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Next, we have a couple contractor, gas contractor license approvals.
I have an application for MAFIERS with Huntingburg Machine Works and Ray Stratton Paint with Precision Metal. They both passed, and it's both been approved by the Gas Department.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them.
I have a motion from John to approve.
I'll second.
Second from Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
I'm seeing those high numbers come through on these gas licenses.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We had on the agenda discussion about replacement of a JCAC board member. I think we'd like to move to, you want to make a motion to table this, Phil?
I'll make a motion to table this.
Can I have a motion to table?
I'll second.
Second from Chad.
Mayor, I do have a comment. Just so that you all know, Lauren is working on putting together a proposal for a questionnaire and kind of a procedure to go through for council appointments. So, as soon as she's got that information together, we'll be forwarding that your way.
Great, because Phil and Chad and I have had numerous conversations, Renee, you've been a part of that, and the mayor, so good.
Is there a way for us to talk about that and look at it before we bring it to the Board for approval then, or?
Yeah, we'll send it out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to table from Phil and a second from Chad. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And acceptance of donations.
I would like to request acceptance of donations to the Park Department in a sum of $560. Those are restricted funds for the MICA aiding endowment. The Park Department has approved those restrictions. They did not have any unrestricted donations this month. And then, the Art Department had $325 in unrestricted donations from various donors, and they had $12,544 in restricted donations. And again, the Art Department approved those restrictions.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations and acceptance.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. Further discussion? Again, it's back to our community stepping up and helping fund many of the things that they value. So, appreciation goes out to all those donors. No other comments? All in favor of accepting those donations? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Hey, Mayor, I did have one other comment, I'm sorry. Back to the board appointments. I don't know if you have all been made aware, but there is a new Indiana law that requires us to include on all meeting notices and agendas, and on our board webpages, information about each of the board members that have been appointed. So, it has to include the board member name, who the appointing body was, and what their term is. So, our agendas will be changing, and you'll see those changes, and I just thought you might wonder why, and that's the reason.
New legislation. More information available?
Yes, indeed.
With that concluding the agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
John?
I'll second.
And a second from Paul. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.